So meeting to order for the October 6th, 2025 council meeting. Would you please stand and join me in the pledge? Uh, Megan, would you lead us to the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the black of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of solid meditation or prayer. Thank you. Melody, would you do a roll call, please?
Councilman Holmes.
Present.
Councilman Curry.
Here.
Councilwoman King.
Here.
Councilwoman Michler.
Present.
Councilman Fish.
Here.
Councilwoman Hines.
Here.
Councilman Crabtree.
Here.
Councilman Hinkey.
Here.
President Dawson.
Present. We have a quorum. Uh, I'd like to remind everybody with regards to your cell phone, make sure they're on airplane mode or silent. We appreciate that. Uh, minutes for approval, minutes for September 15th, 2025 council meeting, take note of motion, and a second for adoption.
So moved.
Second.
By Mr. Crabtree, second by Mrs. Hines. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Uh, unfinished business with evidence, presentations, and introductions. Melody.
Um, I'd like to introduce, um, my, uh, transcription plus person. Her name is April Sellers, and she's beginning with us this evening, and she'll be doing transcript, transcription. And as she gets more involved, we'll switch out, just like Angie and I did, um, with meetings. And she's a former attorney, so we're happy to have her, and I make her feel welcome because we don't want her to leave.
Thank you, Melody. I don't know if she'd like to say anything or not.
Uh, no, just.
We're not.
Don't make a speech.
Present.
We're not that scary, really. Okay, uh, reports of council committee, we met as a finance committee of the whole September 21st, I believe, uh, and gave a tentatively due pass to the 2026 department heads' budgets. Okay? Orders, yes.
The Health and Public Safety Committee did meet last Monday, um, for a presentation on battery storage facility technology for potential adoption into the U D O. We did not take any official action or make any recommendations. It was purely an informational session.
Thank you. Okay, uh, ordinance on second, third reading. Melody, would you read proposed ordinance 25 dash O dash 30 by title, please?
Proposed ordinance 25 dash O dash 30, an ordinance request to repeal ordinance number 5746 and 5434 as amended and enacted a new wastewater utility use ordinance.
Can I get a motion, second to adopt this on second reading?
One.
And motion by Ms. Pine, second by Mr. Fish for adopt so on second reading. Our city engineer, Tori Orey.
Good evening, Councilor Tori Orey and Public Works Director. I'm here tonight to present the proposed wastewater use ordinance. Um, every decade or so, uh, we have to propose a new wastewater ordinance that, uh, provides edits to the current ordinance, uh, to bring it into alignment with the latest, our latest M P D S work requirements, uh, and E P A requirements, and that is what we're doing here tonight. Um, the, the ordinance this year has been completely rewritten, um, in accordance with the latest E P A requirements. The E P A has reviewed every word in this document and signed off on it. Um, it revise our, revises our pre-treatment policy, which is the largest portion of this ordinance. Uh, it aligns the technical nature of the pre-treatment program with the current E P A regulations, uh, for all of our industrial users that, uh, send us wastewater. Um, our existing ordinance is outdated and not effective and not current with the current utility, uh, policies of the E P A. Um, we've clear, clarified and defined and moved gray areas within this new ordinance. Uh, the new ordinance is more business friendly and utility friendly. It clarifies policy related to certain issues for the sewer utility. It somewhat, um, aligns our, it fully aligns our ordinance with the, uh, E P A requirements. We had some provisions that. We had some provisions that were more stringent than what the EPA required. We're going to be able to delist a few of the industrial users and declassify them as SIUs while they will still have to meet our discharge requirements. It also fully incorporates the FOG ordinance and the sewer use ordinance into one document. Those used to be separate documents. If there are any questions, I will be happy. We provide a summary with a memo of all the changes.
Thank you, Tori. Mr. Michler.
Thank you, Tori. Real quick, is, I assume we are already doing some of the changes and things that this ordinance would request, or is this going to lead to some significant changes in the day-to-day operations?
It's not going to lead, we've been working very hard on creating this ordinance and adjusting our programs to be in alignment with this ordinance. It will create some significant changes for a couple of the industries that will be able to be delisted. It will reduce the regulatory environment for them significantly, but other than that, it doesn't really change what we do too much.
And this aligns us completely with the EPA requirement?
Yes, there was a lot of back and forth between us and the EPA to get them to agree to the terms of this new ordinance.
Thank you.
Mr. Fish.
Thanks, Tori, for being here. Just a question about the FOG ordinance. It was sitting out there by itself. Since it's incorporated, it doesn't lose any of its teeth, does it?
We have somewhat realigned the FOG ordinance to be a little bit less stringent. The point of the FOG ordinance is really to prevent fatsoil and greases from getting to the wastewater treatment facility. We have aligned the ordinance to more target the areas that we're having problems instead of just a blanket. Everyone gets enveloped into it.
But it's not, there's no weakening of it since we just incorporated it into one document.
There's some easing of the paperwork side of things to make it easier on the industry and us as well in enforcing it, so.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tori. Thank you very much. I'd like to open it up for the public hearing. Is anyone in the public who would like to speak with regards to this ordinance? Seeing none, I'll return it back to council floor for council discussion, any other council discussion? Seeing none, Melody, would you do a roll call vote on second reading, please?
Councilman Holt.
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman King.
Yes.
Councilman Michler. Councilman Fish.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hines.
Yes.
Councilman Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilman Hinky. President Dawson.
Aye.
Third and final.
Again, a motion for Mr. Crabtree, a second for Mr. Michler for third and final. Melody, would you read it by title, please, and do a roll call vote?
Proposed ordinance 25-0-30, an ordinance request to repeal ordinance number 5746 and 5434 as amended and enact a new wastewater utility use ordinance. Councilman Holt.
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman King.
Yes.
Councilwoman Michler.
Aye.
Councilwoman Fish.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hines.
Yes.
Councilman Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilman Hinky. President Dawson.
Aye.
Passes nine to zero.
Thank you. Ordinance is a resolution referred to committee. We would need to have a public hearing on proposed ordinance 25-0-31. Would you read that by title, please, Melody?
Proposed ordinance 25-0-31, an ordinance adopting the operating budget for the 2026 calendar year, appropriating funds for such purposes and establishing the tax rate for the city of Elkhart.
Thank you. At this time, I will open it up to the public to speak on the proposed ordinance 25-0-31, the city budget for the calendar year of 2026. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak with regards to this? Is there anyone in the ordinance who would like to speak? Is there anyone in the ordinance that would like, in the audience that would like to speak? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. This ordinance will remain in committee until October 16th. Proposed ordinance 25-0-32 will remain in committee. Proposed ordinance 25-0-33 will remain in committee. Proposed ordinance 25-0-34 will remain in committee. Proposed ordinance 25-0-35 will remain in committee. The ordinances and resolutions, we have the park resolution, which we tabled during the budget hearings. Can I get a motion to remove that from the table?
Some of.
Second.
By Mrs. Hines, second by Mr. Fish, to remove this ordinance from this budget from the table for discussion. Jamison. Jamison, what page is your? I don't have that written in front of me right now.
114.
Okay.
Thank you.
114.
Jamison Zarnaki, Superintendent, City of Elkhart Parks and Recreation. Good evening, Council. I apologize for missing the last hearing for you all, but I heard the food was delicious and the game was even better, so. But I will say, I appreciate the opportunity. I wanted to start out by sharing some of the 2025 accomplishments that we've done so far, recognizing that it's only October and there's more time left for an impact. So, to date, we've done, we've hosted over 90 programs and events, leading to 50,000 people that have come through our parks programs and activities. We've engaged over 300 unique volunteers through 14 service days and seven of our new partners with our Adopt a Park program. Our rangers have counted 30,000 people roughly in the parks. That's just what we've been able to see. Likely, we anticipate that there's much more that we haven't seen. Our cash revenue from facilities, programs and rentals are about.
Jamison, before you, I'm sorry to be interrupting. But your main budget is on page 68. I see you flipping through your book, so I didn't want you to get ahead of anybody. I'm sorry.
Thank you. Nope, no worries. Okay. So, our cash revenue this year so far is about $447,000. That doesn't include the donations and sponsorships that we've received, which totals about $180,000. So, external revenue into the department totals about $627,000 so far. Additionally, our capital projects that we've completed this year and started, we've done six new playgrounds throughout the city. We've installed and, we've installed a new bathroom building at Walker Park. We've resurfaced the High Dive Park pathways and we plan to install one more playground and fitness equipment in three parks. So, we also are starting the High Dive Pond and we've resurfaced the pathways there at High Dive. Finally, our first foundation fund day alongside the Elkhart Park Foundation was in June to celebrate Walker Park. And we, we are also working with them on a new scholarship program where they're helping to provide scholarships for camp kids. I am really, really proud of my team and what we've been able to do, and we have two more months to do it this year. For the 2026 budget, we're anticipating operational efficiencies, so you'll see some decreases throughout the line items, including some of the deferred maintenance that we've gone after already and completed, so some of those are reductions. We are aiming for an enhanced effort to bring in external dollars through increased revenues while continuing to provide equitable-based offerings. We recognize that the city has one-fifth of our citizens underneath the poverty line, so providing an enterprise-based department to lower the tax base impact is going to be difficult. So, we recognize that having an equitable-based approach while being more business-oriented will be a challenge, but one that we have to figure out. So, our capital improvement costs, our capital requests include changing out a vehicle to provide for the concessions, vehicle to deliver in between facilities, as well as needed enhancements to the restroom building at Lundquist Park, and as well as improvements at Ulri Park. And from there, I'll take any questions.
Questions for Mr. Zarnaki, Mr. Fish.
So, Jamison, thank you. The parks are looking good, lots of activity, and that's a, that's a great thing for our city. I need some clarification on line 4310400, that's professional services.
Okay.
You're cutting 70,000 in the line and under, under your Schedule A, you're at 30,000. And I'm just wondering why the difference, or maybe it's a typo?
I see that we're cutting 70,000 and we are planned for $100,000 for next year, for 2026.
Okay. But it doesn't line up with Schedule A unless I'm reading something different. Because you've only got 30,000 on Schedule A in the line.
I think because the Schedule A shows that it's an additional $30,000, correct? Oh, there is a typo. So, the Parks Headquarters at $100,000 that we planned on is.
The math there, by the way, is 200,000 for that particular line item on Schedule A, but you've got 30, and then on the line item, budget line is 70,000. So, just, it's probably a typo.
Yes, I think so.
Well, at this time, do we need to make a motion to correct that typo?
Well, we don't know what it is unless you know what it is.
Do you have an idea, Jamison?
Megan, or you have an idea exactly what it would be?
The professional services that we were approved for is $100,000 for 2026.
Well, your proposed budget, but you're still, you still have a math problem.
Okay.
Schedule A versus the 70,000 that you're cutting.
So, the Schedule A, am I correct?
Yes.
But the budget is correct. All right, so we're good there, because Schedule A is not what we advertised. We advertised the budget, so we're good. So, we need to get a correction or to that Schedule A as Councilman Fish is indicating, that's.
We'll fix the Schedule A.
Okay. We don't, do we need to make a?
No, Schedule A is, is not what we advertise.
Right.
We advertised the budget.
Okay.
Mr. Hinky.
Thank you for catching that.
Mr. Fish?
Yes, I'm done, thank you.
Mr. Hinky.
So, as a point of order, are we voting on the parks budget this evening?
We're giving tentative approval to the parks budget like we did at the budget hearing.
So, I'm just wondering, one, how we fit with talking about something that is actually on our docket? This was this public hearing tonight, and now we're just going to get some clarifications? Is that what we're doing?
All right, I'm not understanding you. Help me follow you.
Well, since this is, we're actually talking about an open budget when realistically the budget proposal has been held to committee.
So, you want me to have a public hearing for the Parks Department, too? Is that what you're?
No, I'm just wondering why we selected parks to hear their portion of budget.
If I could, Councilman Hinky, we did not hear from parks during our.
Aha.
Remember?
Yep, good.
You're good?
No, I'm not.
All right, go ahead.
So, I do see, and thank you now that I remember, Jamison. Thank you for that. There were areas of concern, and that was the rollback. You have a pretty significant budget over these last two years, coming from 2.997 million to 4.649 in '25, and talked about efficiencies, but the budget actually went up, 25,325. So, if we had to come down to greater efficiencies, still, do you have a plan in place? Because this will not be the last year of our SEA1 reductions.
Correct. And to clarify, are you saying a specific line item or just the overall?
One, as a department head, I'm saying, I'm asking overall. I have my suggestions based on trending numbers. I do see that you have reduced the 70,000, but again, you've, you've not spent more than 121,000, and the budget was 170,000 in that particular line item of professional services. So, that would suggest, even with greater efficiencies, that 100,000 would be appropriate. I do see you have a drop of 70,000. And only you can determine, is that professional service line item still going to be at that level? Does it still require? And what do you get by benefit to the taxpayer for that level?
Yeah, absolutely. I appreciate that. So, for the professional services line, as we look to efficiencies overall the department, the professional services line depends on what it is that we need to do each year around capital projects and planning. So, it, that's what the fluctuation will see. So, for next year, our focus is on Ideal Beach, and then we've got a couple other capital projects. Well, we have 19 current capital projects that we're looking to do over the coming years. So, not next year, but just that we're working through. So, having that professional services money for assessments and phase two, phase one, some of that funding is necessary. For the 121,000 versus the 100,000 this year, I should say for next year, the plan is related to just the, the help that we need to develop the conceptual designs and that sort of stuff. So, overall, though, as a budget, the operational efficiencies that I was really speaking to is more of the personnel, identifying where we can find waste. Some of the things that we've looked to, that we've identified is around energy reduction, how we operate. So, a case in point is that we worked with the IU professor of aquatics as a consultant, and he came out this year to help us redesign how we can maintain a safe facility throughout our aquatics, but then also decrease the overall personnel that we have. So, it's those things that we're really looking to do to say, how do we do just as much but with less resources?
And I get that piece of it, but if you have staff working more efficiently, but it doesn't decrease their hours, it's not necessarily efficient on behalf of the taxpayers. That's, it's a dollar question. My next part would be, and I would ask that you would find a presentation to tell us about the total cost, including liability for Ideal Beach, how much we are supplementing, how much we are losing per year. And then have we looked at privatizing and, and outsourcing the management of that particular spot?
Right. So, we are looking to those considerations, and that's part of the funding that we're asking for the appropriation is for somebody to come in and do a market feasibility for us to say, here are the opportunities that exist for public-private partnerships for Ideal Beach. And one of those considerations would be, what does that look like? And is there anybody out there who would be interested in taking this over? I remain that this facility is a powerhouse of an opportunity for us as a community. In its deferred maintenance sense, that's been taken away and taken away over the last 15 years, it's become harder to bring people in for revenue. The old adage of it takes money to make money is the same true for Ideal Beach. And so, our hope is to find the right partners to amp up where it matters for the park and then also bring in that revenue. I'm not sure yet if that relationship is fully private, if it's public-private, but I anticipate that when we're done with this design, there will be a public-private partnership in there. We've had some conversations with some people locally who are interested in supporting the project through private dollars as well as donating foundation money for it as well. So, we know the community is appreciative of it. We just got to find the right relationship.
I'm just afraid that if I was not a park enthusiast, I would look at it as a financial arrangement and to protect your interest, city parks and maintenance and, you know, the plans to renovate and do all these things. If you put more dollars into Ideal Beach and it doesn't draw, then you just have a much larger loss comparatively, and it would just seem as we would dissolve our risk by allowing a third party in, or my suggestion, to dissolve the property.
I understand.
So, so there is one, and you talked about professional services. We went through just a little bit. You talked about fuel and efficiencies, but I'm looking at the gas line item, and in '23, it was $5,600, and '24, it was $6,100 projected for this year. It's actually 6,660, but our ask is 12,000. And it just seems as though we, we ramp up. I'll just tell you from, you know, my memory's not that bad yet. We had, you had, as a department head, some ramping up of major projects, and we did, as a council, go along with that, and then that became the new base, it seems, for our future budgets. And that tends to be what happens when we have to look at, what are the efficiencies? What are the benefits to the actual taxpayers? Because I would say 10 years ago, we may have been underbudgeted, underserving, but today, we have a budget of 4.675 million, not including grants and other issues. How do we make that work, as you mentioned, for the lesser employed and for the economic cycle we're likely to go through? How do we make that work and then couple that with SEA1?
I don't know if I have all the time for.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know that you could answer an SEA- Yeah, I don't know, I don't know that you could answer an SEA1 question.
I was going to say, I'm happy to share. I just don't know how long you want me to, to spend on that.
Can you provide some numbers?
Okay, so, for SEA1, our, the plan of action around parks, the Indiana Parks and Recreation Association recently came out with a document that isn't public yet, that I'll share when it is. You can read the Parks Impact Study, though, that they did come out with as a resource guide. One of the interesting things that we're finding is that our park agency is right in the middle. We're not for a cost per capita for the taxpayer. We're still in the low end, much like our water rates. So, we provide a good benefit even with the higher amounts that we've invested in. But that's exactly what you're doing, is investing in your parks. If you look at these as line items of income in or expense out, excuse me, expense in, income out, there are a number of areas where you can pull to say that we are not a net productive institution. However, if you look at the external impact that we bring to the community, we make the city safer, economics are up, we retain and attract talent. So, if you look at that overall, we know that the, the parks are an important investment opportunity for us. For here, with our projects that we've been focused on, we have done a lot, and you will see that we've, we've amped up, but we've just finished six new playgrounds. We don't have any more playgrounds after this year to invest in. So, those are the types of things where we have amped up a number of projects over the last five years, and we are not going to continue doing that for another 20 years. So, you'll see in the small tools and minor equipment that we're going down by 150,000 this year, excuse me, $100,000 this year, because we've worked through a lot of that deferred maintenance. We have a few more to do throughout the city, but they matter. They matter to our residents. They matter for us to want to play with our kids, connect with our neighbors, areas where we can be exercising in a safe space around people. So, yes, we've, we've increased the budget, but we've also increased the opportunities throughout the whole city.
Mr. Missler.
Thank you. Jameson, thank you for your excellent presentation so far. I just wanted to say that I believe the, the Parks Department specifically is one of the few departments in the city that brings in a significant amount of revenue. You know, buildings and grounds is fantastic, but they don't make money, per se. You know, when people complain that there's nothing to do in Elkhart, what I always direct them towards is your Facebook page. There's farmer's market on Saturday, there's pickleball lessons going on, there's day camps for kids who are going through spring and fall break. And not only do those provide a service to the community, but they act as an attraction and a retention tool for economic development in our community. So, seeing the past couple of years, some of the progress that we've made in the parks from Walker Park to the disc golf course, which utilized a private-public partnership to bring in a new venue for entertainment into our community. And the same thing for Walker Park, utilizing outside funding to help support our parks. I think it shows a continued dedication to this city and a continued excellence from the Parks Department to our community. So, thank you for all the hard work you have done.
Mr. President. Mr. Fish.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the park and recreation budget.
Tentative.
Simply approve the park and recreation budget.
We have a motion and a second. Tentatively approve. Any other discussion? Mr. Hanky?
In, in saying that, to all of us, you know, cost and divided by benefit equals value. So, we can talk about you're the biggest revenue producer of several departments, and that would be actually true. On the other hand, we have to score the value itself, and that's what obviously we need to talk about. Because if we've got all this to show, I'm asking for some numbers specifically to Ideal Beach. I'm not there. I would suggest close it until you show me some numbers. I would also have you look at gasoline as well as advertising. So, if we have a great Parks Department, all these things going on, yet we're having to spend $25,000 to make sure people know that we have this when we really have utilities that go out, we have billboards, we have websites. The city owns a bunch of IT stuff, and it's yet another cost. I would also take us, oh, to land improvements in 20, this year, '25, we had $200,000. We've spent in the first six months, $2,920. But that 200,000 was a big chunk that was like a placekeeper, and we really didn't spend it, but we, we fluffed the budget with that amount of money.
Sorry.
But at the end of the day-
We planned to spend that this year.
At the end of the day, the budget rose $25,000 nonetheless. So, you, like any other department, personally, I'm asking as a taxpayer and city representative that we just have to look at every line item and say, what is the true value of what we do? We just can't keep doing what we've always done. We're growing budgets. What are we doing differently? What's the value to the public? And if I had to trim something, what is my litmus test to say, here's number one, number two, number three? And I would just say, the dog park would be on my list as well as Ideal Beach.
Thank you. Mr. Melly, would you do a roll call vote on the tentative motion?
Councilman Holtz.
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman King.
Yes.
Councilman Missler.
Aye.
Councilman Fish.
Yes.
Councilman Heinz. Or Councilwoman Hines.
Yes.
Councilman Hanky.
No.
President Dawson.
Aye.
Thank you, Jameson.
Thank you, Jameson.
Thank you, Jameson.
Going to do the second.
Jameson, we got the 114.
Park Program. That's right.
Park Hugh.
Yes. Park Program.
114.
Got a motion, one second, for tentative approval.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Fish, second by Councilwoman Hines. Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Jameson. That was an excellent presentation. Thank you for all you do with our Parks Department. At this time, new business. I need a motion and a second to appoint James Byron through the Fire Merit Board.
So moved.
I got a motion by Mr. Holtz, second by Mr. Fish. Counsel discussion. Yes, Mr. Hanky?
Is he new in town? Just kidding, sorry.
Yeah. I don't know if Mr. Byron, if you'd like to say anything.
Aye.
Byron. And just thank you for the appointment. I look forward to supporting the firefighters, first responders, so thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your opportunity, sir. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you for coming.
Any other new business? Thank you. Mr. Hanky?
The update on Bristol Street, if we could have that. I'm not sure if there's a way to publicize that as well. I do get a lot of remarks about the number of streets closed. I mean, progress has its costs. I get that, too. So, just trying to keep the public involved and aware. And then additionally, as we're talking about budgets and so on, I noticed, and I would like a greater story about the lightning strikes at the airport as we're talking about budgets and predictability, lightning, we cannot. But there is a quote here, not to exceed $100,000. There should be a insurance impact on those lightning strikes. I'm wondering if we're self-insured out there for the first whatever amount of money. And then from Mr. Huber is not in here. I had a follow-up question, and maybe I can call him, but I, when I read the minutes, council minutes, I needed further clarification on the public-private partnership on the parking garage, the true cost to build, and then ultimately the forgivable loan, who's going to ultimately own the thing, the obligation of upkeep and liability. And Mike told me that that was still in negotiations, and I, I would have hoped to have had that resolved before we voted for it.
Thank you. Any other new business?
President.
Ms. Hines.
In our communications late, I apologize, but we do, I invite you all to, the state of the district for Elkhart Community Schools are going to have three upcoming community meetings. I think it would serve us well just to go and listen and see where the state of Elkhart Community Schools is at with a lot of the challenges similar to what we're experiencing on the city side of things. So, those, October 15th. At, all meetings are 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. October 15th is at Adamsville Road Church on County Road 7. October 16th, from 6:00 to 7:00, is at Trinity on Jackson. And then October 20th, from 6:00 to 7:00, is at St. James Amy Church on Martin Luther King Drive here in Elkhart.
Ms. Hines, would you, Councilwoman Hines, would you make a motion to make this part of our communication so we can accept it?
I sure will. Motion to accept this.
Make, make a motion to amend the communication to add this. Is that your motion?
Sure.
Second.
Motion of second by Ms. Crabtree to add this addendum to communication for the state of the district. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay. We have no?
I don't know.
Ms. King?
Yes.
Want the extension court?
I like to read a letter from, card from Shelley Manthe, and she sent a card, Ms. King and Elkhart City Council, I just want to say how much fun we had in Elkhart this summer. The celebration of the stars was amazing. We really felt a love, community connection. At Art Walk, the street music was fantastic at every turn. On our way home from Friday Night Football, the library concert looked fun. We strolled the island of blues Saturday, then on Sunday, Family Day, and Magneton Park was relaxing. We really are a music town. As busy as we are, it's so nice to get outside, listen to music, to unwind. Thank you, city, for all these music offerings. Shelley Manthe.
Thank you. Any other business? Seeing none, we have no orders on first reading, we have no resolutions, we have no vacation Mayor, Border Works, Border Safety, no reports. Neighborhood associations. Ms. King.
And on October 15th, from 5:30 to 8:00, I will be having, at end of the year, a meet and greet at Tolson, and sponsored by Inova, and I will be sending out a flyer this week.
Right, thank you. Okay, privilege of the floor. Does anyone, I'm sorry, I'm PMRAN neighborhood, I don't know how I could ever forget that. First, first Sunday of every month.
First Sunday of every month, take your communion and come to the meeting. That's right. Okay, yeah, the PMRAN Neighborhood Association did meet yesterday at 5:00 p.m. at the PMRAN Park Pavilion, and we had another good meeting with the neighbors and talked about our neighborhood and the good things that are going on in our neighborhood. We actually had two cleanups this year and to reach out to help our neighbors, and we've discussed the houses, and we've got a couple that's still for sale, think they're a little bit overpriced, probably why they're not selling. But it was another good meeting, and we're always happy to meet with our neighbors, and we put that information on our flyer we passed out to remind people of this meeting. And I see Pastor Hackworth is here, raise your hand. He's one of our finest members of our PMRAN Neighborhood Association, and we're glad to see him here. He's been in the neighborhood a long time, a lot longer than me. All right, but it was another good meeting, and it's good to know your neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Curry. Alex, would you remind Mr. Byron, and I didn't before he left, and he sits, he has to sign a certificate. Yeah, I didn't.
I'll do that.
Thank you, thank you. At this time, we have privilege of the floor. Does anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on anything that was not on the council agenda tonight, please step forward, state your name. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Scheduling of committee meetings, we have a special call finance committee meeting of the whole on October 16th at 6:00 p.m. to finalize the budget. So, act accordingly. Acceptance of communications as amended. Got a-
So moved.
Accept communication as amended, is a second by Mr. Fish. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Got a motion to adjourn. Got a motion from Mr. Hines, second from Mr. Fish. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Got a motion to adjourn. Got a motion from Mr. Hines, second from Mr. Fish. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We are adjourned.